And I just, that helps sometimes. Okay, so I think I'm gonna get started. When you couldn't hear me, I was on mute and I was actually talking to Chris Weaver, who is on as well. And so those who don't know or who haven't had an opportunity to meet him yet, Chris Weaver is the elementary support supervisor. It is a new position that was created out of just a number of different positions and out of a need. And so he's coming to us, we work together at the high school. He actually was born and raised here in Minneapolis and then went and was in New York for eight years and worked at the high school with me there for about 10 years and then was in Minneapolis working at the elementary in Hiawatha Leadership Academy and now has come back to St. Louis Park. And I'm just super excited to have him working with us. His passion is connecting and working with students and families. And so I'm thrilled his two sons actually work, not work, go to school in St. Louis Park. And so his connection has been here. His wife actually is a part grad and so it feels like home, coming home. So I welcome him home. So Chris is here. So if you want to say hello.
Hello, everybody.
Oh, you got your mute on.
I know, because if we turn our mics on, we're in the same space, it's gonna be.
I will turn mine off, just because then yours highlights.
Hello, thank you. There it is. There it is, just like I said. Thanks, everybody. I'm glad to be here. Thank you for rolling with this extremely fluid situation and we're gonna make the best of this year. This is, this is what, where we are. We're just, we're making things happen and we're doing the best with, best we can with what we got, so. Thank you. Glad to be here, glad to be a part of the Peter Hobart community.
All right. So we are gonna work through our town hall meeting and I first just want to apologize for the short notice that this meeting came up. And what I will say is that first off, it came out of a need. There was a lot of questions that came up with what is this going to look like? And, and I know I will do my best along with Chris to answer many of the questions. And I also know that more questions will come out of it. And I also know that we won't have all of the answers. But with it is that my, my promise to you is that I will get the answers that I don't know and/or I will work with others. And that was part of our hope of the four schools working together is that we wanted to really show in a real way that we have been working really hard together in a very collective way to be aligned as a district, that we are stronger together. And that is such a true statement as we move into this year. And that's what my hope is as a community of Peter Hobart and the community of St. Louis Park, that this is not something that we need to nor should be doing alone. So as we move into this school year, there's a lot of unknowns and there's a lot of things that change rapidly. So please, my hope for all of us is that we stay present in the moment, because the moment changes. And so if we can stay present to what we're doing now, and if you're feeling uncertain or you're feeling whatever it may be, please reach out when you have questions. Please reach out if something just is not sitting well with you. And I also recognize that it may take three, four, hopefully not 10 times before you're getting the response or the questions that you need answered. And I also recognize that I haven't been as responsive as I need to be lately. Because my inbox is this big and my phone calls are that big. And that's, I don't say that as an excuse, because I need to be responsive now, more so than ever. So I promise you, I will get there. And, and I need to be. So staff is back this week and we're moving into our new redone building. And so we are ready now tonight to talk to you about what does this gonna look like as we start next week with our students. So I'm gonna move ahead and I'll go through the questions that we have. You can certainly, Jude, do you have it up to end of that? Sure. As we go through it, Chris is gonna present the slides for you. And you can certainly ask the questions in the chat on the side. And we'll do our best to kind of work together to answer them. And with that as well, when we're done, I will collect all of them. This is also being recorded. So we can go back and answer them that way as well. Are you able to present? All right. So if you can give me a thumbs up that you see it, it's presented, that's great. You can go to the presenter mode. Okay. Thank you. Right. Okay. So when we started off, the, from the very beginning, we looked at it as making sure right away in June 18th, we went into, we were directed to make sure that we had three educational delivery plans. And that is what we did. And quite a bit went into that. We had different groups of people together to create those and we currently have them. So we have task force and plans together for a distance learning plan, a hybrid and an in-person learning plan. And so we are ready to go with all three of those. I also had said it before with the school board and I, I say it now that we are, what we had in the spring, that was an emergency learning plan. It was a situation that within days, we had to be out, ready to go. And, and that was the reality. So we did what we could. All of you did what you could and, and our students were brilliant and amazing. And I appreciate the partnership that all of you took on. And I don't think that any of us would want to be in that same situation again, like, let's just be real. So when we talk about distance learning 2.0, that's because we need to be better. So with that, that is where we're looking to do better. This is not a plan for us to put into place that we are gonna pump out some educational material and expect you to homeschool your children. That's not our hope. So as we move forward, our response is that, you know, we did ask for a lot of feedback. We're asking for information. And this is our plan as we move forward. Our hope was to really start in distance learning for a lot of intentional reasons. That also being is that in our distance learning, obviously, but also in our hybrid plan, a majority of the hybrid plan will be spent in distance learning. And so if we can get the nuts and bolts of that down and get the real, be really intentional about what that looks like, then we can ensure true learning to happen and have pieces of that where we are ensuring that students are learning and engaged and in relationships with each other and their teacher. And, and then we can have a positive learning experience occurring. So this is not just a little stopgap until we get to whatever's next. We're being present in the moment right now. So our plan as we move forward with our safe learning plan is that all students are gonna begin in the distance learning format. And I know that there was not the best feelings from everybody around that, but for some, that was totally great as well. I want more than ever to have all of our students back and all of our staff back, but I also want to make sure that everybody's safe. And so how do we have both and? And so we're trying to work through what that looks like. Our E2 early learners and through second grade, they will start in the hybrid model on September 28th. And then our grades three through 12 will start on the hybrid model a week later on October 5th. I know that there was some confusion because there was a misprint in the communicator that went out. And so for that, I apologize. It is updated on our Peter Hobart website. But it is our, for us, a Peter Hobart K through 2 that is gonna start on September 28th and 3 through 5 that will be October 5th. All elementary students will attend school using the classroom, homeroom teacher model. And what that really means is that we did not wear some school districts around us. If you signed up or decided to do the distance learning and kind of opted that option, that there is a different teacher, a different plan, that's the distance learning teacher. And they have all of the students who are doing distance learning, whether it's for that grade or that, you know, school, depending on how many students. We really are banking on that and really believe in the importance and the solid part of relationships. So as I got a peek at Ms. Jones, I'm thinking of Ms. Jones. So if Ms. Jones has her group of students, that's her group of students. So Ms. Jones students, if they are A students, because it's the A through K alphabet, or they're cohort B, because they are L through Z, or if they're cohort C, because they've chosen to do distance learning, those are all her students. And those students will interact with each other virtually. If they choose to come in because of the cohort under different days or not, they will all be together. And that is the piece of it that regardless if, you know, because of whatever may happen, if they choose then to then move to distance learning later on because of something that has come up, they, regardless, it doesn't mean that now all of a sudden they go to a different teacher who's teaching distance learning. Ms. Jones is doing all three of those, partly because Ms. Jones is the way that we have set up this plan that is the same plan for distance learning and hybrid. They are the same. It's how it is delivered. And I'll show you what that looks like in just a minute. So we are offering that full-time distance learning as a choice for families. And it is one of those pieces that we believe the way that we've set up distance learning is that it is an option where it is going to look engaging and part of what our education system can look like. That we want it to be something that looks like it is feasible to be engaged and part of the class. All right, moving forward. All right. So this is a little bit about where I was talking about the cohorts of groups of students. And so we, we talked a little bit about how the hybrid, I'm sorry if my sound is breaking up, I'm not sure. But with the hybrid group A is a Monday, Tuesday, they're in person. Everybody is distance learning on Wednesday. And then, and that's the A through K alphabet of your last name. Hybrid for student group B is last names L through Z. That Wednesday, there will be lessons. They will be asynchronous. These are fancy names of synchronous, meaning that they are live, that they are happening right now. So as a teacher, I would be teaching my math lesson. And just like right now, we are synchronous learning right now. I am teaching in front of you. But also at the same time, it's being recorded so that somebody who has something else going on and they're not watching or they didn't wait around for that first half an hour when everything is a bit crazy, they can come back later on and watch it. And that would be asynchronous. So either way, they're getting the same information. It's just two different ways that it's being, that you're learning. So that would be happening on Wednesdays, that that's opportunities where learning is still happening, lessons are still being delivered. It's just not synchronously happening. It's also opportunities on Wednesdays, as you can see down below where it talks about, or in the middle of the screen there, that there's flexible times where meetings can happen with families. And there's student groups, things like that can happen. Teachers have also talked about opportunities for, that that might be the time where they are actually videotaping and maybe pushing out new material. And so that when they are actually then live with students, that they might actually then be able to talk about like, okay, as I presented in the video, this is new material. Now that I'm live, let's talk about the questions that have come up. Let's talk about how we work through these different pieces. So really looking at best practices about how we do hybrid learning or how we do distance learning. So it's, there's, there's research, there's science to how this works. It's not just like, we're gonna guess about this and see how it works. We've had time to actually put some research to this and figure out what works best. And then those in group C, the distance learners who have chosen to say, I'm choosing to stay home. I'm choosing to be at home until we figure out kind of where the world is at and where our family's at. This is a better choice for us right now. That they are home the whole time, but they are in the distance learning part where they can stay and get the synchronous learning happening in all of the cohorts. Again, just because I'm A and I might be in person in the morning when I'm at home, I'm still then logging on and getting that in-person or the live synchronous learning then for cohort B, I just am doing it from home. So I'm still seeing my classmates who are then in person on Thursday, Friday. I'm just seeing it at home. So that's kind of how, that's the plan. So you can kind of see it in like a visual down below. And that's how all of the elementaries are working their way in. And we're asking for everybody to stay with their cohort, because that's helping us to make sure that we then can split classes based on social distancing and things like that. If there's a special situation that would come up, like, you know, I, I have siblings, but their last names are different and I want to make sure that they're on the same, but my, my son and daughter have different last names, then obviously we can work through on situations like that. Just let us know. Okay. Move ahead. And then are you checking the questions? Okay, sure. I just can't see them. Okay, so I answered the Wednesday question about the review or new. It could be both. So Wednesday is kind of that day where it could be both, depending on how introducing something new or a review. It would be both. Other questions that have come up? Yeah. So our format for communicating out our lessons is CSO. The really great thing about Peter Hobart is that we've been doing CSO for, all last year, our whole building went that way. And actually, many of us did that, you know, a year or more before. The rest of the district came on and now they're doing it this year. So we've been doing it for at least a couple of years and the rest of the district is jumping on now. And so we're, we're really familiar with it. So for those of you who are maybe going, oh, I, what is it? Just know that it is our way that we are communicating. The feedback that we got from our families, one piece of feedback that we got from our families was that we want a common way. Like maybe in kindergarten, I was getting newsletters or something like that, that, you know, was being sent to me or I was getting text messages with remind me. In third grade, I might get, you know, one way of communication, like emails. I'd get emails home and then another way, it might be CSO. But there was no consistent way of Peter Hobart, that this is the way I got it through all my students that were here, all my children. So that's why across the district through elementary, we, our common platform is CSO. When you go to middle school and high school, their common platform is Schoology. And so that is the way that we have all made the commitment to communicate with families. So that will be the way that lessons will be given through. So when we are taping, so like, we're taping this tonight, this lesson then, if it was my, you know, third grade class, I would put it up on CSO and there's where it would be. So you could go back by like date or subject area or whatever it is, and you could see it and tape and see what those lessons are and how that is.
Through CSO.
Yes. And so then also the other nice thing with CSO is if there's communications and things like that that are going out. There's also, like if on your cell phone, you have communications that come to you through Spanish or your communications come through in your own home language and it's set up that way or in any language, it will also automatically translate to you in that language. And similar, when you go and send a message back to the teacher or educator, when you type it in that language as well and it goes to the teacher, it will automatically translate back in English to whatever that teacher is. So it has those things as well, which is awesome. So those things are another huge selling point for, for us, a major bonus. So, and also really cool is, as your student is doing different activities and things like that in CSO, you can actually see those things. So when you're going, what'd you do today? And they go, nothing. Cause that's what my kids do. You can actually go on and see the different things and comment on them. And any of the messages that you do back and forth between the teacher can be private or you can actually post them up, kind of like the Facebook thing, a little bit. And you can actually put some public things up there for your own student to see like, oh, okay, you know, mom went and looked at it or whatever. So those are neat things too. Sure. If there's a couple more that I can take, that's great. And I'll keep going. So yes, it will look like last year, what that's where like the learning platform of CSO where it will be. So that it's not like these paper worksheets coming home or random emails. It'll all be kept there as like a portfolio of what is happening. The difference is, we also heard from families though, is that they did not like that, I mean, it created anxiety, like they could open up the next morning and it would be like 44 different, you know, alerts or whatever that you've got, you know, something to do or what is this all about? And so we're being really intentional and trying to create what is a typical schedule or what can you expect? So if I have, you know, unlike, I want to make sure there's a math and reading lesson every day, more so of what are the essential learnings that are happening? And these are the things that are happening. But then how is it that specials are included in this? How can I expect the different intervention teachers? And things like that to be included? And I'll get into that as well. So it, I don't want it and none of us want it to feel like just a bunch of busy work. Like here's the little check marks of things to do. But we also want to make sure that it feels like there is that balance where some families felt like there was too much and other families felt like there was not enough. So how do we make sure that we're meeting the needs of an individual student? But also making sure that it is something that is engaging and worthwhile and is part of the learning. So make sure that if you're feeling things on either end of that spectrum, that you are communicating with your teacher about that and that we address that right away. But we did hear on both ends of that from our families. So on the screen right now, there is a, a schedule that we've, that has been shared out before. Our plan is in the morning at 7:45, because remember, it's a new start time, everybody. I set it at the PTO a week or so ago when we had our first PTO. I'm like, isn't it funny that nobody really cares about start time anymore? Like, that's not the talk anymore. And I don't mean that in the fact that nobody cares, but it's not the talk. So 7:45, good morning. We will be here and that's when school starts. So 7:45 is that all teachers are expected to take attendance. And so that they will be doing attendance through their morning meeting time. So breakfast will be offered and you're like, how are they doing breakfast if it's distance learning? I'll talk about that in a slide here moving forward, but it's offered. Breakfast and lunch is offered as a pickup up here at Peter Hobart and actually at all of the schools in the district. So if people are wanting that. But again, I'll say more about that in a moment. But that at 7:45 is a time for the classes to come together in circle and just to do a check-in. So the other thing that will be something that we're doing here at Peter Hobart is that we are going to be having the specialists join the circles. So that will be the different, you know, PE and music and Spanish teacher along with the classroom teacher and kind of moving through the grade levels to join the circles just to make sure that they have that opportunity to connect as well. So that will happen. And then when we talk about the whole group, transdisciplinary lesson, we just like to throw big words in. So that idea about the whole class, keep in mind that realistically, like what the timeframe is, is always gonna depend on the developmental age. Do I expect a kindergartner to sit down and, and be in front of a screen for 45 minutes while a teacher is talking to the entire class of 20 students? No. I actually look at the time right now and I think, how many of you are going, and we're good. Like, just tell me what we need to do. I feel it. Like, that's just too long. So it may take five minutes, 10 minutes. It's building that capacity. So how do we get what everybody needs and then say, okay, now we're gonna split up into groups? So we are moving to Zoom. So people have heard about Zoom versus Google Meet. Zoom allows us to do a lot more. Google is moving to that platform, but they haven't gotten up yet. And so Zoom will allow us to break up into groups of like four kids or any 10 kids, however that is. And so as we have more adults, like our instructional assistants, like our intervention teachers, like our specialist teachers, that we can have smaller groups and an adult with them to do some of that smaller group time and working with our students. It also might be a time that says, okay, here's the concept that we're gonna be teaching right now as the teacher's doing it to the whole class. And so I'm gonna have you guys read this next part or read this article or work on this piece in CSO. And then at whatever, at 10 o'clock, we'll check back in. Now for one student, it may take them 10 minutes to go through it. For another student, it may take them for a half an hour. They don't need to sit on the screen to do that. And they could check off altogether and then just to be back. Now you might go, my, there's no way my kid's gonna be back on the screen. How, do I need to monitor the fact that they're off and then they're supposed to come on? So those are the things that we're teaching that independent learner. And we'll work through what that, what works and what doesn't work. But that's part of us learning, the class, and them also learning what is their style as we go through this. And in many ways, these are the things that we'd be learning while they're in our classroom too. I mean, when we break off and say, go ahead and read on your own this next whatever, you can walk around a classroom and go, are they really engaged or not? Did they actually read what we were expecting them to do or not? That's part of what we've worked through together as we are figuring out our classes and what, what ways we keep students engaged. So that's, that is part of our job as educators. So we don't expect you to be micromanaging and hanging out over them. We do expect the partnership to let us know what's working for you at home and what's not. So let us know, partner with us and we will work together on that. So that is that part. Um, so that is that part, um. The end of the day or the end of that afternoon, we will end each part with a closing circle. I check in at the end, um, and then there is lunch again that's offered at the end. And then there'll be that break time, cause we won't really have like a recess. So that is, there will be breaks throughout the day. We don't expect a kid to be logged in for the whole, like, you know. Four hours or whatever that time is, we don't expect that. Um, but there will be. A teacher available, their classroom teacher available and on throughout that whole time. So it's not, um, you know, how that looks, they will be communicating what that looks like by grade levels. So again, age appropriate, it should not look super different between one third grade classroom and another third grade classroom. They are working collaboratively together about what that looks like. Um. Then as we take a look at the afternoon, so when they're coming back on afterwards for the afternoon. There will be times where there is synchronous lessons by the specialist. So times when there's PE that will be synchronous by their grade level. And then there'll be times when there's Spanish and also, um, music. The one thing that we are doing differently is that normally they would get media once a week. We will not be offering media, um, to start with. And, um, the decision to do that is that we wanted our media specialist to be available, to be supportive to our students in the classes. To our teachers and to our families. That was important to us because, um, there's just so much technology that's going on right now. And, um, so when there's situations or issues that come up. We need our media specialists who are skilled in these different areas to be sure that if we're having issues. That a teacher can't get a lesson going or something up, we need them available to help us be ready now. That we don't have twenty-five kids sitting somewhere going, I can't even log on, our teacher's not there, what's happening? Similar to if you at home are having issues or problems, um, some of the feedback that we got is. Who do I call? Where, where's my like one eight hundred number to say this isn't working? We need that as well. So that is on our website. There is a, an email, there is an actual number. Um, and so for us, Thomas Odermott, our media specialist, he is our person. Um, that we, um, want available to be able to kind of go through those things and help troubleshoot and get us back on track. Um, we don't want families sitting at home for, you know, weeks or even a day going, I, I don't know what's wrong and I just can't do it. Um, that, that's not what we want. We want, we don't want people to be frustrated for reasons like that. So, and for any reason. Um, so that is something that we, um, will be doing there as well. And then our specialists also will be, um, recording, um, lessons as well. And they'll have lessons that will be available in the afternoon. And again, your teacher will be, thank you, Ann Locke, she put the family tech line number in the chat. So you can see that there, it'll also be up on our website, um, but there's that number that you can call. Um, and then the specialist will also have lessons that will be recorded that you can, um, see as well. And also know that as we work through, your classroom teacher will be working through that schedule. So it's not like, oh, do I just, let's pick Spanish today or let's pick PE, is that my choice? These are the things that we all will work that schedule through so that you know what that looks like. All right, we'll flip to the next one. And. This just gives an example about how we, how a student can kind of work through, um, you know, a. A schedule to make sure that they get everything. And this was an example that, um, PSI created. I'm gonna be honest, I think it's more confusing, so don't try to decipher it. I don't have my secret decoder ring, so I'm gonna pass it, move on. Sorry. This is, um, please don't tell PSI that they're recording this, sorry. Anyway, um. This is the things that just came out relatively new. That was terrible. Delete, we'll have to edit that. Anyway, um. So this is new information, actually some of it came out like about a week ago. Some of it came out this week and actually one of the pieces on here is coming out next week. But either way, not important, what is important is the information. So there are, last spring, they had free meals. So it was free meals for everybody. It doesn't matter. That's so important that you know. Um, people were like, do I only get free meals if I qualify? Is this meals only for certain people? Nope. Free meals is for everybody and they've just made that decision. So, um, that just came out. So anybody, any student can get free meals and they are offered at every single school. So you can come up and get breakfast and when you get breakfast, they will give you lunch as well. And so that is while we are in distance learning and actually that will be while we, when we come back for hybrid as well. So they will give you enough for breakfast and lunch, um, for that time. So just know that that is happening and that will start on Wednesday, September ninth. Um, the childcare, the childcare is, um. To me, it's always confusing about, is this critical care, is this emergency care, is this? Tiered one, tiered two essential, who fits into this, who doesn't? Um, and it's also one of the most important questions for many of us. And so, um, I would say the most important piece to that is that, um, you call. I know it's through community ed, um, is where they do it, we will have it, um. Here at Peter Hobart, from what I believe, there's about thirty-some who are signed up right now. Um, but I, I really don't know much more about it, um, other than. It's just important that you get information and find out if that's something that you need and get signed up. I've heard from people, like I signed up for Kids Place. Um, they said they'd open it if there's enough depending on, so can I do Kids Place? Um, I, I, I don't know a whole lot about that, I'm just gonna be honest. Other than, um, I would just call and follow up with them to see where that is at right now. Cause I, I don't know. Um, cause I've heard both, I've heard, yep, they actually are offering it and they have it. And then I've also heard, I think they're only taking critical care right now. I, I don't know. So. I'm not, I'm not much help with that. Um, the after-school community ed enrichment classes, they are going to be offering. They are virtual, but they are offering, um, a number of them. And, um, so those are all through community ed, so you can go into them and take a look. And see what is of interest, um, but there's a lot of great offerings there. Um. And we can move on. And that's it. That is it. Okay. So questions, if you wanna go into the. Thing and then I can see if there's pieces in here, I know there are, cause I'm not looking at them. Um. Okay, so I'm looking back at Jonathan, I had a question around like the holidays or Fridays that when we have no school or MEA. Um, and things like that, will they adjust those hybrid days? If you were like end of the alphabet, will they move them? So we have had conversations about that. Um, and Superintendent Osai actually was going through the calendar just to see how many they are. And will they get moved up so that it's like a Wednesday, Thursday instead? So I, a decision hasn't been made about that, but I know that that's a question that he is addressing. So I don't have an answer, but I know it's come up. So that's what I can say to that of whether they'll adjust the days. Um, but, so I don't know, but I know it is on the radar for sure. Um. The grade level schedules, um, it was brought up today, so whether it happens. Within that Monday or that Tuesday, Wednesday, so the eighth and ninth, so, um, as teachers are reaching out. Um, and setting up the meet your teacher times and things like that, whether that happens at that time, that they'll talk about kind of what their day looks like. Um, or by the time that first, you know, day at school on the tenth, um, or for kindergarten, the fourteenth. Um, it will happen within that first, you know. Week, um, or before, um, that's been the ask, um, but. Um. That, that would be my guess, um, that's been the ask of it. But we're still working through the logistics of exactly how and when that we will fit everybody in and how that looks. Um, and I'll be just really transparent, is that I'm trying to make sure two things. Is that one, clear is kind. I want people to feel clear. About what it is that the expectations are and keeping high expectations for what it is that. I'm expecting, that families can expect, that students can expect, because that, there's a lot of uncertainties. The more we know and feel competent and comfortable in doing, um, that's better. The other part is, is that everything is different. So how we choose to enter that, um. I want to take it as an opportunity. And I feel like this is an opportunity for us to really try to do things differently. So as much as I can, I want to empower all of us to embrace that, to say, why not? Um, let's not just try to go into thirty minutes of math, thirty minutes of reading, thirty minutes of PE, thirty minutes, like, why not? Let's, does this enhance your spirit? Does this enhance the spirit of our students? Um. If this meant an hour and a half of PE at the same time that we're learning Spanish and. Mr. D is doing a really funky art project off on the side, I see you, Mr. D. Why not? Like, let's do something different. Because I don't know that we were meeting the needs of all of our students, actually I know we weren't. So let's do something different. Um, I'm hopeful. Um, I'm not asking for us to get. Totally crazy, I kind of am, may, maybe not. But I think back also to, um, this is a time for maybe that we do have an opportunity to make some good trouble. And so if we can, we should. And so I hope, if anything, um. We're all in a place right now as we're coming into a building where. We're still trying to figure out where our rooms are and where did that cart go that never showed up? So I don't wanna push people over the limits, but I do want us to look at how we can be. Yes, innovative and curious. And if we all stay together about it, I think we are gonna be in a better place. So, um, so I also ask that we can't do that alone. So as you see things that are exciting for your students, your children, um. That I think together we'll do that. And, and I know if it can happen anywhere, it will happen at Peter Hobart, I have no doubt about that. So, um, so that's just part of it, but. So one of the things, if you filled out your survey and you're like, which one? Cause there's fourteen that are coming at you on a regular basis, I get that. Um, there was a survey they had gone out about whether or not you are interested in, um. Doing like distance learning. And even when I met with the PTO, um, a short while ago. And I had asked, so if you filled out your survey and I'd probably say half, if not more, we're like, well, I'm waiting. Because it feels so final, like I'm gonna sign up for distance learning. But there's like a, I understand if I sign up for distance learning, it goes till like, you know, June twenty-eighth, like. I don't know what's happening come end of September, let alone June twenty-eighth, like that's so permanent. Um, so I say this and, um, I carefully say this because. Yes, we need to know kind of overall, like what people are thinking. But I don't blame you and I wouldn't know what I'm gonna be doing in June twenty-eighth, let alone September twenty-eighth. Yes, we're inviting people back. So yes, I do know. But. I believe, um. It is our mission, it is a children's first community, that we will do what's best for children. So if that means I've signed up for distance learning now and come October twenty-eighth. My family, my child, my decision has changed, we will work to figure that out. Um, and if I didn't sign up for it then, and now it's October twenty-eighth. And I'm feeling that it is a different decision has come up for me and my family, we'll work through it then. So I, I just don't feel like, um. Half the district can be like, cut her off, cut her off. I, I don't know, I don't know. But that's my feeling is, um, we'll figure that out, we will figure that out, um. That's my feeling. So I, I just think that we have to. We do what's right for our family right now and, um, and we will do what's best to make it right as we move forward. That's my answer. And Chris agrees with me. So then we're gonna say yes, that, that's what we will do. So when we move to hybrid and how do you be present in both? Like I got my, you know, ten kids in front of me and I maybe have fifteen more online, how am I present with both? Um. Uh, the real answer is, I don't know, haven't done it. So with that is, um, I think. Yep, we do have, we have a set plan with multiple adults. We can't do it alone. So, but we do have a very intentional plan of, um, that's why we have the extra people. So we do have, um, our instructional assistants who are gonna be assigned. We have, um, our interventionists. Um, we are intentional that we are not doing pull out. So in the past, we maybe would have pull out groups of reading or pull out groups of math. We are intentional that during that time, we are not pulling students or groups of people out. Um, it is a push-in where we're having adults, um, part of it. And again, the push-in might be virtually, cause we don't necessarily want exposure of like, let's get all these people together in the, you know, group. But we are having extra people in to connect with, whether that's for our more virtual students. But we wanna make sure that people are feeling connected and engaged. And so, um, and there's a lot of research that has come out, I mean, there's been a lot of research on this for the last six months. So, um, what people have, what schools, what groups have shown success in this? And then we're looking at models that have worked. So that's part of it as well. Yeah. Yeah, so spec, specials, they will be doing virtual, um, once a week. And then they will be doing asynchronous or taped lessons as well. Um, but again, in the beauty of Peter Hobart, I have our specialist teacher like Massey, Brian Massey, our PE teacher. Um, Henry Huber, he's like, could we actually, we're trying to do a combined lesson. Where we'd like to go to parks around Peter Hobart and do lessons at different parks and we could videotape and. You know, wear our masks and ask people to social distance, but if they come and to wherever we are, we do like a little road show. On Wednesdays and make that happen on Wednesdays. And I'm like, why not? That sounds awesome. So I just, I think that these are the things that, why wouldn't we do music and movement? And I'm looking at Philip and I'm like, this is your thing, Philip, right? So like, I'm just like, these are the things that I'm like, this is our community. So I just, yes. So that's a little bit about what specials would look like. And, um, I do know for sure, the expectation is across the district. That specials in the afternoon would be one synchronous, so live thing, once a week. And then there would also be one, um, asynchronous. A week for each of the specials, for each grade level.
Uh, what is Power School?
Yes, so the Power School is something that's, it's like our student information system. Um, and that's across the district. When you get to the, um, upper grades, so middle school, high school, it becomes like. The holy grail of like, ah, I can see if my kid was tardy to class or they were skipping and it's the grades and it's everything. Doesn't mean a whole lot in elementary because we don't use it. I will say, Chris and I know from the high school, we came here and we're like, what? Nobody uses it? Like, that's how you get everything.
We will be using.
Yes. So Chris and I were like, please, can we get on it? Um, so it's something that as a district, I believe that we'll be moving to. We don't need another thing right now. Um, as much as I love Power School, we don't need another thing right now. But it is something that, what I do love about it right now is, how many times do we get the same sheet of? Fill out the demographics, next year we get the same thing, fill out the demographics. And if you got more than one kid, you're filling out the same thing every year, like, can we please get out of the, I, I don't even know what. Decade it is of these paper pencil things and who actually reads this thing? So if we got to actually online registration where I could actually just go in and look at it and be like, yeah, no, it's all good, same thing it has been, then I'm done. So, um, no more of this fill out the same form year after year, that I don't know anybody reads anyways. So that's what that Power School login is. Saving us a step, multiple steps. So it will be good.
Um, how do both, how do students do both seesaw assignments?
So seesaw isn't a platform that they have to like. Be on to be meeting, seesaw is just the way that they get the information back and forth. So it's the way that they're gonna get assignments. Um, Google Meet or Zoom is just like this. So it's the way that they're gonna be like connecting and, um, meeting. But seesaw is the actual like assignments.
But it, but it could be that a teacher is like having them work through an assignment during the meeting.
Right, yeah. Right, yeah, it's it's the way that they can, and actually, for many of your teachers. You may have never even heard through, because they they could have gone to Seesaw to click into the meeting, so that was their quick, like. That's how they actually got in was through their Seesaw. Or clever, so they were trying to really streamline things. It's, you know, education, they like to have like fourteen different ways to get through one thing, so we're doing our best to really streamline everything. But they shouldn't have. We're gonna do our best to really try to streamline everything so that you don't have to be like. I'm supposed to be here and I have to be here and I have to be here, the one thing I will say though. Um, and teachers are already bringing it up, that if you have multiple kids. That we, how is that gonna work with the amount of devices, if everybody has to be on at one time? What is that even gonna do if you have multiple devices, what is that gonna do for your bandwidth? You know, I I I. I'm on meetings with Ann Lox, our I B. Curriculum Coordinator, and she's got four kids, um older kids, you know, in college and beyond, and 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 some in high school as well. But she'll be on with a meeting with us and half the time she's frozen, and or she's that kicked out, and she's like. You know, we can't all be on at the same time because they're all on and she's on, and so how does that work? When you have that, so if you're having issues with that. Again, you may have said in the spring, like, we've got enough devices, we're fine, we don't need it, and now you might start to go by the end of the. Spring realize, actually, we might need more devices in our home where I didn't think we did. Or I might need some more technology in different ways, so just please be in conversation. With us about what your needs are, because we want to meet them, we need to know them. So um the question about the why are we doing half days, two half days rather than a full day? To be honest, part of that, um most of that came out of the idea about lunch and recess, like, how are we managing lunch and recess? When um with elementary, to have the six feet of distancing, to have the amount of people. Um, that's where it became really tricky. The the time that it took um when we went to early. It almost became a little bit of a gift where we could get in so much of our instruction in the morning. That when we moved to that time of getting the lunch, um and then going to like a recess. It um, safety was a hu- a huge concern. And so um that became um. A major concern for us of how we were going to be able to manage that in a safe way. The other part with gifted and talented um or G T is again, as an intervention, just like reading or math. Is um, so Jeff Sazlo is part of that, and he is going to start. And work with every grade, so he will start in one of the grades and will be doing a. Push in model where he will be doing enrichment activities with all of the grades and moving. Um, through each of the grades and um doing it that way. Again, in the afternoons, and on Wednesdays, there's time for him to meet um in small groups. Or individually with students. However, that those needs are, um but he will be absolutely supporting each of the grades and supporting teachers about how you enrich for all. The teachers or the students through that way as well. So that I'm excited about as well. Other things, oh, there's. Hard to say about how many of the four hours are gonna be fully synchronous. Teachers on the whole time, it just depends on with who and how, and again, developmentally. I can't expect a kindergartner to sit in front of four hours, I wouldn't want a fifth grader to sit four hours in front of a screen. So it just depends on how that looks, it might be that they're meeting in small groups. It could be that now they're supposed to, you know, be off of the screen itself. Um, and be doing some other activity, um whether it's like reading or working through. Um, part of um an assignment and then be back on. Um, but they should be engaged in learning for that four hours, whether it's at a screen for that four hours. Not necessarily, um so it depends on um the grade level and what it is that they're working through and what they're doing. If you have a fifth grader who's now a sixth grader, and they still have a Chromebook, hang on to it, well, they're, they'll use it there. So they hang on to it, if you have a current kid that had it from last year, hang on to it. The they, it is theirs to keep, to keep working through it. Um, and again, if you need one, then as you filled out a another survey about whether you need it or not. Um, that will be something that you can get when we do the meet the teacher, and we'll get one for you then.
Just really quickly, are we, can you opt in for full distance?
Yes, you can opt in for full distance learning. So there is a survey, um it went out in my communicator, the first one. Which they're up online and the Peter Hobart website, and there's also, I think, on the Peter Hobart website or district website, there's a. One of the many surveys, there is one around distance learning, so you can fill that out too. So a- again, if you are, there's the synchronous times that that they can be on to do the live part, and you're like, I. It doesn't work, I can't be on, I can't be there to support my kid, and I know it's not gonna happen, so when I get off work or when I'm available, now what do I do? You can absolutely then go to Seesaw and they will be listed there of the synchronous times that 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 were recorded, and then you can play it. Or help your student play it and they can watch it then, so that's the part, so even though they were synchronous and they were live at that morning or. Whatever time that was, you may not get to it until later that day. Or maybe you were gone for three days because you went and visited whoever, then you can go ahead and watch whatever the days are. That they were there, so the learning is still there, it's just the format that you then got the information, and that's fine. Special art lessons, will there be some special art lessons? Mister D, see you. Art is so important, um and so yes, and I I actually. Joe has asked me like, so what's the plan, are we still gonna do something? Absolutely, um how that looks, um again, I ask, let's be creative. Um, and I think if anything, it allows us to have a bigger opportunity than just, you know, these pocketed little. You know, thirty minute things or opportunities, um and so I'd say we dr- we dream bigger. So, yes, absolutely, needs to happen, needs to happen. The biggest thing I'd ask from parents are just to be in partnership with us, and our Peter Hart Parents Community is amazing. Let us know, just please let us know, there's gonna be, there's gonna be bumps, there absolutely are going to be bumps. And that's how we learn, I mean, that's what we tell our students all the time, is make mistakes, because when you make mistakes, then we learn from them. I don't expect this to be perfect, and actually, I don't want it to be perfect, because we don't want this to be education. As we move forward, we wanna learn from this to make even a better education, we want our kids with us. But we gotta, we gotta educate our kids in this time period as well, so how? We do that, we need to know, and not everyone's gonna like it the same way. But we gotta figure out how to do this in a way that kids still are saying, I like school. Maybe they won't love it, but I don't want them to absolutely hate it, so make sure you are in communication with us. Yep, you know your kids best, so the question is like, what about, you know, burnout, screen time, that kind of thing? Um, I would say the same thing, and there was times I would sit down with my s- my own son and be doing homework, and it would be painful. And there's a time when it's like, it's not worth it, it's not worth it, so when you get to the point where you're like, okay, we are sitting and there's way too much screen time, I see. Changes in my own child that are not healthy, you know your kid the best, do not. Do not sit silent and go, this is not my kid, reach out, let us know. That is not, that's not healthy for you, that's not healthy for them, let us know, like, we'll work through this, we'll figure this out, and really, we go back to. We're talking about two or three weeks, this is all we're doing right now, we're staying present to now, and then as we move to hybrid, if we're even moving to hybrid. Because we have to watch the data of what is happening, um and that will dictate. What does it mean, do we go back to hybrid, do we come to in person, do we go, and I'm not saying that we are, but that's part of what the commitment is. Of our state, of our, of our s- city, of our um school district. That we are driven by what the data is telling us, what is safe, um it's just not us going, okay, I think we should do this now, like. Um, our superintendent is committed to that, and um we are, we are as well, so that's that's part of what we're doing. One of the questions is around sick days and absences. It is important, that is what we um we're required to do, so if your child is sick. Please call in, the regular attendance line is there, um make sure that you do that, there's. That that still will happen, so please do. Just let us know, and um and we'll we'll work our way through, you know. Any of those kinds of situations. Yep, so special ed um is something that they are even work, as they were meeting together today. So your case manager will um talk a bit about it, so there isn't pull out. During that morning time when they are in hybrid. But there will be times for them to be meeting individually and in groups, so it's not that special ed services aren't gonna happen. It needs to happen, it absolutely will happen, um it's just the timing of it and when and how that will look, so just know that. Um, your case manager will have a better understanding about when and how that looks. Yep, so, once we know. The the grade levels and the agendas and when that will all happen. That will get published out to that grade level, we won't put it up on the website per se. At least unless we can, and I don't know that we can, but it will get published out to um to the families, so we will make sure that that gets out. And we will do, we will do that. Um, and I know Ann just put up, Ms. Lox put up the Peter Hobart Attendance Line, which is the six six oh four. And that's the nine two eight six six oh four, so do that, that is important. Again, with whatever fluid, my one of my favorites. What if there's changes that happen or things that pivot and whatever. It is important always to give our families as much warning and and notice ahead of time, our plan is. To go to hybrid on the twenty eighth for K two and to um. For three five is October fifth, that is our plan, and that is what we are planning to do. If anything changes in that, um we would absolutely give families a notice well before that. So that, you know, that is, that is always important for us. So during hybrid, we have rules around that, that is guidelines um that we have to follow. Um, based on square footage, based on how far, you know, size of the classroom and everything else. So we are, and that was part of even the A through K, um knowing the size and all of that. So our class sizes are um no larger than anywhere between ten and sixteen. Is the max, but we don't have that as an issue in any of our classrooms, and if they get that way based on anything. Then we would split and move to either a larger classroom or a larger space. Or move um with another adult teacher and split the class, so we have plans in place for that too. Yep, so if you are like, I I need, I need my assignments printed, or I need something of that, all of those accommodations can be taken care of. Um, just be in communication about what it is you need, that is our responsibility to do those things for you, we just have to know. So let us know and we'll make sure that we can do that. There are other things that are coming up, again, please reach out, um also know that Monday or Tuesday, not Monday. Tuesday and Wednesday is that time with your teacher. They may know some of them, they may not, I will be here, Chris will be here, um and so certainly, we will be out and about. As much as, you know, we'll be here. Stop by, say hello, stop by and just ask the questions. I know that this is a time that feels like a lot, it does, and. If you are feeling up anxiety, your your child will feel that, so. The more you can feel at least more in the know about what's happening. Not that there won't be questions, and not that there won't be a lot of unknowns, that's just part of where we're living right now. I just want to at least give you as much information as I know. Um, and be absolutely transparent with you, if I don't know something, I'm not gonna give you quick, you know, answers that sound great, but are not true. Like, that's just, that's not real, so I will tell you what I do know, and I will work to figure out the things I don't. So stop by, um if you plan to come up, if you don't plan to come up, don't, don't come up for that, give us a call. Um, and, you know, we'll work together to figure this out, but I want you to feel good about your decision, whether that's. Being distance learning or, um and we're all doing distance learning, so it doesn't have to be. Today, or tomorrow, or in the next couple of days, you can work this through, and then, you know, in the next couple of days or weeks. You know, plan a time to get some of these answers or feelings worked through, and and feel free to call Chris or I, and we'll, we'll work through it together. So just know that that's what I want, that's really what I want. Yeah, Chris, you wanna say that?
Thank you, I I I was answering questions and I blew through all of the gratitude comments, so just thank you, we really appreciate that. And in this time of. Fluidity, uh it is much appreciated. Really do just appreciate all the comments, and again, like Carrie said, I know there's some things in here that we did not answer, but please feel free to. Reach out.
Yeah, very much so, and there will be, um. When we get to the point about dropping kids off and what that looks like or picking kids up, there will be protocols around that and. And such as well, um and I do, I do so much appreciate um the grace that has been given. And just what this looks like right now, and I say this also as, I sit, you know, near, not next to, but near Chris as a black man. That the world right now. I can't say is very different because it's a lived experience that I don't have to live as a white woman, and. So the pieces that I navigate are very different than the things that Chris has to navigate. And how he has continued to show up and keep students at the center is. Is incredible and it's very humbling for me, and so I don't. I just, I so appreciate that this is who I get to work next to and my partner, so I um. I'm just thrilled to to be where I am right now. As hard as it is, I wouldn't wanna be anywhere else, and um my belief is we will be in a better place. Like, this is where I have to be or where we have to be right now, because we will be somewhere better, and um I am committed to. To doing what we have to do because our kids are gonna be better, and um. So we're making a better world, and I I truly, truly believe that, so I'm excited, I'm excited. Please, please, I say that truly, reach out, let me know, and and push, push on me, push on me. With grace, I say, hold me in loving accountability. Please do about things that just don't feel right or things that are showing up for you, um. Let me know, I need to know, because I have a lot of blind spots, and um. Obviously, they're blind spots, I don't know them, so let me know, and um together we'll figure this out. So I will work through the questions, if you've got stuff on there that you're like, they never got to my question. Assuming that your name matches with where you are, I will look you up, I'll find you, I'll make sure I get those things out, so thank you so much. Thanks for spending the extra time in the first half hour of crazy, but have a great night, everybody.
Thank you.